We will learn something. And it's my pleasure, and the reason you're here is to hear Nick Locata. Now, when did I first meet Nick Locata? It was a while ago, but he had already written his book. What was the name of your book?
Becoming a Citizen Activist.
That was it. And I learned... Hooray! Laura brought her copy. I loaned mine to someone, and it hasn't come back this season. But it will soon. And besides, we've got the real thing today. So, Nick, I didn't know until I read up on you lately that you started out... Was it an insurance man?
Yes.
And you did that for several years before you were motivated to run for city council.
Yeah.
And then you hung around for five four-year paces, whatever. That's what you hung around for, and then you wrote the book. So I think you're really well-qualified, and our ears are open for whatever you have to tell us. And the mug is yours. So, welcome to the mic.
Thank you.
And if you want to move around, just push that up.
Okay, great. It works. Thank you very much, Adele. And I really appreciate Adele and Legal Women Voters, I think is also sponsoring this. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great. For inviting me. And this is probably the fourth time I've been in Horizon House talking, but I was a candidate. Well, I was also a...
Were you a volunteer?
In the office. And then also, I think I talked about...
Oh, yeah.
I love it. I was also an author. So let me just give you just a brief thing about my background, just so we put it in some kind of context. And I used to do this all the time, so I'm totally familiar with this operation. My heart goes out there, believe me. So I grew up in Cleveland, Ohio, but I moved here in 1970, so I'm actually Seattleite. But in Cleveland, I don't know how many people... Have anybody been to Cleveland? I'm just curious. One person, two, three? Okay. You're here. I always had the same thought. I was in Cleveland. I wanted to be somewhere else. But that was at the age of eight. But I realized that Seattle was a great place and fell in love with it. I came here for graduate school. I got a degree in... Master's degree in sociology. And back in Boeing Green, which was a state college. I never thought I was going to be able to go to college. It was very... Sort of thought I'd never make it. I was a C student, so I was one of these... This is in the era when C students could get federal assistance. You know, not grants, but, you know, low-interest loans, which we were able to pay back and go to a public school. And as a result, there was a huge influx. Most people don't understand this. In the mid-'60s, the college population doubled with almost within four years. And many of these students, like myself, not only was it their first time in... Any member of the family had gone to college. The first time that the parents had children who were going to college. And my parents hadn't even graduated from high school. So there were many people who went to college with myself who were so excited and wanted to learn. And I was a bit disappointed when I got there because, like many people, when they move away from home and don't have any oversight, go free, go crazy. So it was a party school, which disappointed me, strangely enough. My daughter takes after me. She went to graduate school, and she ended up going to Grinnell in Iowa, just surrounded by farms. But she... I went with her and returned Santa Cruz, which is the most beautiful campus you can imagine. And I'm thinking, "That's where you want to go? This is fantastic." And no, she wanted to study, so she went to Grinnell. It's a long way to say that when I got to Seattle, I did, in fact, with what they call an insurance broker, with Sprague Israel Giles. It's a firm that's very progressive, in fact, located downtown, only three Democrats running it. And naturally, I ran for city council the first time in 1979. I was 33 years old. I came in third, so I didn't make the primary. But I learned a lot about meeting people, and the reason I ran is because I saw things going on and I wanted to participate in. And then, after being in the firm for 15 years, I had written my first book while I was there, actually, which was a children's book called Princess Bianca and the Vandals. It's still... It's in the public library, and you can still get it on Amazon. And after I left the council, I retired. I saw what happens when you stay there too long. You eventually get booted out. And I had Big Eagle. I wanted to get booted out, so I said, "Okay, I'm retiring." And but I still wanted to do things, and so I was still involved with a number of different groups. I got on the council because I was involved in redlining, which was a big issue. I worked, actually, with a woman named Margaret Cease. I don't think she ever lived here, right? Margaret Cease... Tim Cease became a deputy mayor. He was her son. Either deputy mayor or chief council for at least a couple of the mayors. But Margaret was the co-chair of this redlining group, and I ended up being the other co-chair. So I worked personally with her, trying to do something about redlining in Seattle. And we were very successful in getting legislation passed by the state and the federal government. I actually, first time ever, went to DC and testified before a congressional committee about why redlining was needed. So I got the bit. Am I not talking close enough?
You're talking close enough, but I'm too thirsty. Had to come back and get my...
Oh, 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 no, that's fine. Great.
But I will add that Margaret Cease was my first legal woman voter.
Fantastic.
Chairperson of a unit.
Oh, fantastic. I know, there's lovely connections. And being here, I've seen a number of old friends. I can't name all of them, but Andy's back there, Seth is here. I know Will... Anyhow, a couple other people I've seen before are here as well. Spare, that's what I wanted to say. Redlining legislation would have been around... Boy, that's a good question. You know, it's funny. I keep a lot of files, and I keep a lot of records of everything I do, because I know that my memory's going. So I always have, you know... The old days, I literally still have file drawers. Now, a lot of stuff's on electronic. It would have been in the late '70s, but I can't give the exact date. And one thing, and I'll just dive into the topic that that leads into the city council and all kinds of legislative levels, is that once you pass a piece of legislation, no matter how well-written it is, or how well you think it... How good it is, unless two things happen. One, how the legislation is written is very, very important. You want to tie into it some sort of mechanism for oversight, to make sure that the laws are being followed. On a federal level, actually, that takes place, what they call solicitor generals for each department, that are usually appointed by the president. And they make sure the departments are conforming to what they're supposed to be doing. They're supposed to be independent of the president, actually. They're not supposed to be appointed by... They are appointed by the president, but they're supposed to serve for the public as a public oversight. Short note, amongst both the Democrats and Republicans, sometimes they'll just move them out or ask them to resign. One of the Democratic presidents, I can't recall which one, did that. And when Donald Trump got into office, he followed that pattern. But one of his major complaints, even the ones that he appointed, was that they weren't loyal to him. And he was very disappointed in that, which was a sign of a failure to understand how government works. Like the attorney general is not the president's attorney general, personal attorney. It's the public's attorney. That's a slight digression, but that gets back to legislation, and that gets back to even local. So one example that I was very intimately involved with was a thing called paid sick leave, which was legislation to guarantee that if you're sick and you feel that you can't attend work, that you should have time off with pay. Now, not unlimited, and a number... Well, most countries outside the United States, most countries that are economically developed and democracies, have that law federally. We do not have it federally. And there was one city, San Francisco, that actually had it, and no other big city did. Some people came to me and asked, "Why don't we do that in Seattle?" So there's two lessons. One is... We did pass it. I want to say why it was important to monitor it. But the second lesson, for anyone who's either holding public office or is lobbying, okay? And when you lobby or go and ask, "I want something done," you want to find out what is the legislation they're following. You want to look at the legislation, or have a friend look at it, or someone. You don't have to be an attorney. Usually, they're written in a way that you can understand before they end up being ununderstandable. But in any case, the first step, usually you can understand them, is you want to see if there's a review period, and you want to see if there's anyone who's responsible for reviewing it. Okay? That's important. That's a trigger. But the other thing is that when you look at legislation, or you have an issue, you want to find out who has the power to do something. Is it at a city level, state level, or federal level? Happens in the court system all the time when people bring lawsuits. For instance, I'm sorry to use Donald Trump a lot, but he's so available for examples. He is being... He's managed to be able to be sued in four different courts. And some are state laws, some are federal laws, some are civil, some are criminal. I won't go into the civil/criminal, but there are state and federal laws. Likewise, on a local level, there are city laws, but generally, they're misdemeanors. They're not major felonies. If they're felony, they actually go to the state systems. You undergo a district court. But city governments, the power that they have varies from state to state. And a lot of cities generally have what's called a charter, okay? So they have some authority that is defined separate from the state. Okay? I'm trying not to lose people here. So the city's two major powers are to have police powers and health powers, okay? Which is to protect the safety of the people, security, criminal, you know, breaking the laws in that sense. But health, make sure that obviously you have clean water, making sure that you live in habitable housing. That's why cities can pass ordinances to make sure that the buildings are habitable. I was involved in that effort, but I won't go into the laws that we passed there. But health is a very powerful one. So some folks came to me and said, "Look, this other city, San Francisco, and some other places are looking at having paid sick leave. Why don't we have it?" And I said, "Well, that's a great idea. I know that European countries have it, but we don't have it here. And I don't see why it's... How it is..." I'm talking about city employees? He said, "No, all the employees in the city." And I said, "Well, I don't think we have the power to do anything like that." And the third thing I learned is that most people that you vote for, who get into city, council, state government, federal government, as we're discovering, with some of the people who've been elected, don't understand what their powers are or what their limitations are. You know, they often, as a politician, which means you're running for office, and then you're in office, they run on promises. They run on views of what the world is going to be, or how they're going to change your life. And I believe, honestly, that 90% of those people, whether I disagree with them or not, really believe that they can do something, okay? But they don't understand how you get there. They don't understand that there are laws that tell you how you get there. Now, some people don't want to follow the law, some people don't believe in them, but they do exist. And I'll talk about that later, what makes sure that we keep those laws and how they are enforced. But they pointed out to me, "You know, the city charter has health authorities. This is a health issue." And then I said, "Oh." And checked with the city attorney. He said, "Yeah, that's true." Because all you want to check with legal sources, make sure you're not going down a dead road or dead-end road. And I said, "Okay, I'll work with you." They had actually gone to another council member, who was very progressive, very nice guy, basically said, "I don't have the time." And I said, "Yeah." I was one of these people, always had time to do something that was a little different because I didn't want to get bored. So we went ahead and pursued it. And again, if you want to get something done, passed, want to change a law, want to amend a law, which is just as powerful, you want to know who to go to, who to talk to. They did the right thing. They came to a council person. You have to know what powers they have. They were right about that. They knew there wasn't a law, but they did know there was someone... Somewhere else had it. So you always want to do a comparison. And talking about... When I talk through these examples, they seem like I'm digressing, but I'm touching on points that I touched about in my book, Becoming a Citizen Activist. It is sort of a manual, in some ways, of how to get something done. When you're trying to emphasize getting something done, you want to look at, "Has it been done somewhere before?" Because that's often one of the first things that someone in authority will ask. Because, well, it's a smart thing to do, but also, and part of that is my take on politics, which is that basically, a good portion of politics is psychology, okay? I was just talking to the former Speaker of the House, the state legislature, and we're talking about how to get legislation passed. And it says three things. But the third thing is probably the most powerful, which is personality. And why is that important? People are affected by personalities. It's psychology. The recent example is the former Speaker of the House and Congress walking by someone who, you know, they ticked each other off, and he happened to just bump the guy as he was walking by and hitting him in the kidney with his elbow while he was being interviewed by NPR. And of course, he got national attention, and they both... He denied he did it, but it's all about personality. And I can go to historic examples that have literally changed the world. I'm a big fan of historical changes, dramatic historical changes, like revolutions. And I know too much about details there, and I can go about how many of the major revolutions have changed the world. Grand ideas, but sometimes the leaders diverge on those ideas, and their personalities clash, determine, in some ways, the fate of not only that country, but movements that affect the world. Going back, that's why politicians ask, "Do you have examples?" Because they don't want to look embarrassed. They don't want to basically waste their time, because their time's important. And they want to know that someone else has done it. So this way, they can say, "He did it, so maybe we can do it." So I... And this is the other thing. Every politician, or everybody in office, has some authority that they can... And sometimes a budget they can do something with. County council members here used to have a very large private budget that they could do things with. I mean, not illegal things, but, you know, promote things. Seattle City Council used to... It grew smaller and smaller. When I was on the council, it smelled... But I used it to take and invite other council members or staff to go down to San Francisco, interview how that worked, paid sick leave. Came back with hard examples, and we eventually got it passed. And we got it passed because you have to work with people who disagree with you. Not necessarily... You're not made necessarily change their mind. You always want to move one block ahead. You always want to move... I was a strong believer, and that's funny, I was always called a radical, and I'd never thought of myself that way, but it's always that incremental sort of person that believes in incremental change, because that's the one that could eventually get something done. So when I was doing that sort of incremental change, I always wanted to see, what's the next person I can do? If I can't change that person, maybe I can get that person to have some doubts and not be actively opposing me. And that's important. When I was running for office, one of my asks for people was, "Would you support me?" They would say, "No." Then I'd say, "Well, would you be neutral?" And they said, "Well, I'll think about it." I said, "Would you... If you're going to support the other person, could you wait until very end and do that? Or at least not endorse the person? Or at least if you, you know, if you're going to vote with that person, don't give that person money?" You know, I'd ask for whatever little bit I could squeeze out of that person. And the same thing with the paid sick leave. And one little story, I write about it a little bit, because it's interesting. The lead opponent on the council was Councilmember Tim Burgess, who I actually had a very good relationship with. We were generally opposed on a lot of policies, but we really enjoyed, strange to say, the game of politics. It's like chess. We both were pretty good chess players. I, you know, I think we both kept scores, and we probably came out with different numbers. I think I beat him more often in legislation. I'm not sure he would agree. But I said, "Let's take a walk around Green Lake," which I still do, occasionally with people I want to meet and influence or ask something from. And he said, "Yeah." So this, you know, it was about an hour walk around Green Lake, and asked him what he thought, asked him what I'd do. And in the end, he ended up mildly not opposing it, and when the final vote, he voted for it because everybody else was already there. So you don't give up. That's what I'm saying. You have to believe in yourself that it's a good idea. You have to look about what the fundamentals of going forward are, how can you convince one person at a time, and how can you move the ball forward? Now, going back to my other example, which is, once you pass a law, no matter how good it is, it could be altered, or people may forget about it. It's amazing how many people forget about the laws that are already in the book. I mean, like the charter was a perfect example. I hadn't realized that. Most people, when they get to office, don't... I say, "You should read the charter." Every department, whether it's city, state, or federal, has guidelines. That's why most people who are legislators of whatever branch don't read those guidelines. They'll have their staff do it. Whether the staff does it or not depends on how good they are. Those guidelines show you doors to move through, something to get something done. So when you get into office, you want to make sure that the legislation allows for guidelines that allow for oversight and review. Now, we also passed the minimum wage, which I was also one of the co-sponsors of and worked with people on. And in fact, I worked to get an assembly of people who were academics, who had done studies, and let it open for anybody who wanted to come to have a discussion. And that's important, having open discussions, because you want to bring people in who don't necessarily agree with you. Not necessarily troublemakers in the sense of disruptors, but people who would disagree, because you want to have that open discussion so people feel they've explained where they're coming from. And we were, again, able to pass the minimum wage, I think, with just one dissenting vote. And that person actually was not a conservative, was someone who thought that there was another way to go about doing it. And that's one of the things you always often have to overcome. In fact, the biggest thing I always felt you have to overcome to get something changed, whether it's in a club or whether it's legislation, it's not the people who oppose it outright, because you can argue with those people on facts, or, you know, bring up data. It's, strangely enough, often it's the people who are... They fall into two categories. One is they have a better idea, and so they don't want to do yours, and they want to wait until they have enough support to do theirs, right? Which is a delaying tactic, and means that you don't have their vote, ever. The other, strangely enough, is the people who are in the middle. And it's because there are some people in the middle who will never either vote or make a decision, or they'll only make a decision at the last moment, so you never know where they're coming from. Even on the council, sometimes we'd have a vote, sometimes it was five, four votes, and we didn't know where the fifth vote was going to come, the one that was going to swing, because someone was still trying to make up their mind. So what we did was, we passed it, but I wanted to make sure that these two laws were being enforced. And we started hearing things where people were ignoring the law. And some people felt that they were excluded, or they didn't know the law. That was their excuse. "We don't know the law." So you need an enforcement mechanism. And legislators are not a good enforcement mechanism. They only work through laws, right? They don't enforce. That's why you have an executive, a legislative, and a court, right? Judicial branch. So within the legislative branch has the authority to delegate authority to what would be considered the executive branch, or cabinets, or offices, by law. But you need a vehicle, you need a department. There was none that really existed for enforcing paid sick leave or minimum wage. And again, San Francisco had one. And that's actually when I went down to look at and interview those folks, came back with a model, and it was finally adopted. Now we have the Office of Labor statistics, or something like that, so they keep changing the name. But it actually does. It educates both the employees and the employers with the losses and what responsibilities are. It's not geared on catching people, you know, punishing them, but they do have a system that if you break the law repeatedly, you are going to be fined, okay? And that's what you need. You need, again, a scale to move up. No one wants to be... If you move in too strongly and enforce something, people's initial response is going to use that against you. You're going to say, "Look, you passed a law, and now you're beating up on small businesses. So now you're beating up on employees." You have to make sure that, again, you've got something that scales up, but ultimately, you do need teeth, okay? Ultimately, you have to recognize, and they have to recognize, there is some penalty if you don't obey what has been passed. So I try to use examples, what happened in the city, what happens on the state level, what happens on the federal level, because these are sort of common elements that we look for in who's a legislator, say, or a politician. And you want to make sure that people understand what the law is. Now, it happens at all levels, and I'm going to digress here a little bit, because I want to talk a little bit about national politics. And by the way, if I'm talking too fast or loud enough, raise your hand, say, you know, speak up or slow down. But also, if you have a comment, or if you have a question, or something you want to clarify, have clarified, just raise your hand. And I know people sometimes, the element is, you don't want to be the only person raising your hand. So I'm going to do a little exercise. For just a moment, everyone raise your hand. Okay. So now you... Now that we got through that, right? So now that you've already raised your hand once, you want to raise your hand, you're not going to be the only person who ever raised your hand, or the first person to raise your hand. And I will recognize you, and, you know, prefer you don't give a speech, but you could, you know, ask a clarification or question. And I want to... If people don't mind, I want to talk about national politics a little bit, and how it reflects some of those elements I'm talking about now. But does anybody want to talk about local politics again? Actually, I could comment on the recent election. Would people be interested in that? Okay, good. That's what I just ceased. Let me put it in the context. Okay, I was on the city council for four terms. Actually, it'd be five terms. I keep forgetting. That's right. I was there for five terms. I... I was there for five terms and eighteen years. And when I was first elected, I was definitely considered the outlier. The term radical is always thrown around. I think it basically means someone doesn't fit in. But often it's used for someone who's disruptive in a very physical violent way. So it's hard, the difficult, and the definition of terms changes over time. What was true twenty years ago is not true what it is today. And certainly, what was true a hundred years ago isn't true today. In fact, I wrote a piece called, Why Is It That The Two Parties, The Democrats And Republicans, Have Changed Philosophies 180 Degrees? If you go back to, well, before Abraham Lincoln, or about Abraham Lincoln when he, he was one of the, he wasn't the first Republican candidate, by the way. He was the second Republican candidate. But the first one, they win office. And the Republicans at that time were considered the more liberal party as far as being the party that opposed slavery. And the Democrats basically tolerated and actually supported slavery because their base was in the South. Go forward a hundred plus years, and not that the Republicans are in favor of slavery, although governors like DeSantis sort of say, well, it wasn't all that bad. But in any case, we do have some variation. And one is a conservative and one's a liberal. But when I first got on the console, I was referred to as a radical. Basically, I was not supported by the business community. And I wasn't anti-business. I always felt like you have to look at where we put our public resources and make sure that everyone's getting a fair, fair access to it. So I was always in favor of more community development, neighborhood development, making sure there were sidewalks in neighborhoods before we start putting more expensive pavilions somewhere else. Making sure that, you know, there were more sidewalks and, you know, sort of infrastructure issues. Making sure that all the neighborhoods were melt, met, their needs were met. So I think it's endorsement, either at that time, we had two daily newspapers, The Plain Deere, not The Plain Deere, that's going back to somewhere else. Yes, in the morning. And then The Times in the evening. But I did get some community newspapers, which don't exist too much anymore endorsing me. And then on the console, all the council members endorsed my opponent except for one, who wasn't running again. And he was running for mayor and lost. And, and I was outspent. But I had been active in a number of issues. So I knew a large network of people. And it ends up, I, I won actually by a sizable percentage. And one of the best comments made to me was by one of the council members who, Ruby Charles, a daughter, who was on the council. And I was there for a couple of months, three months. And she goes, we ran into each other in the hallway. She goes, you know, you're actually not too bad to work with. You know, you, you actually, you know, listen. I was like, oh, wow, this is great. But I was introducing legislation a lot of people didn't, didn't like. And I knew we weren't going to pass. But I felt that it was a good discussion to have. And I surprised myself, I was always able to get at least some people to support for it. So it's a long period of time building up. Towards the end, my last term there, Shama Sawant got elected, who was a socialist. And because of my background, I understood, and she was what they call a Trotskyite, follower of Leon Trotsky. And I understood how her party worked. And one of the things people criticized her about was, she's not an independent. She only follows what her party says. And again, I understood that and I, and she won. In fact, she beat Richard Conlon, who was one of the people who was a member of the Democrats and the Green Party, as I was, when we first got elected. He got elected, Peter Steinberg got elected, and I got elected at the same time. We were all sort of the three outsiders. And Richard, she was running against Richard. And Richard had been more and more, I would say, supportive of a lot of development neighborhoods, which I think hurt his base there. And as a result, I, and she also came up very strongly for minimum wage. And he's the person who eventually voted against it because he thought he had a better idea. So, and I told Richard, Richard, you, you need to be more out there. You know, say what you think. Tell, you know, debate her. Tell her what you, get your ideas out. And he said, no, not a problem. I'm going to win. No one's ever won in her. And that's one of the big mistakes all politicians make. They assume that because they're likable, it goes a long ways. But it's not the only thing. Two, they know more than other people, which goes a long ways, but it doesn't. And, and three, they got more money. You can have all three and lose. And that's what happened with, with Richard. And that's what happens with any level. So when she got on, on the console, I, I said, look, just respect people. Which she followed zero percent of the time. So I didn't have a lot of influence on her. But she did, but I did ask her the funny part out, and this gets sort of wonkish. I knew how her party worked, which no one else in the council did. I understood the term called democratic centralism, which is really wonkish, but it's all about how the Soviet Union works and how, you know, those, those kinds of organizations work. And when I asked her, how, how's it work in your group? They were like, whoa. So she sort of respected me in the sense that I, I understood where she was coming from. I didn't agree with her, but I understood it. And she did have an impact on the council, good and bad, okay? The good part in my mind was she got issues brought to the fore. And a lot of people who were actually not at all progressive, certainly not socialist, sort of liked someone who was kicking the can down the road harder than I was, okay? My incremental approach didn't quite appeal to them. And they liked someone that just going to get things all messed up. Very much like Donald Trump and why he won. Someone who's going to mess things up. Because they felt that no one was listening to them, rightly or wrongly. So, and she's also a very smart campaigner. And she knew how to go out and talk to get, hire people to do door-to-door work. And has a strong message. But she also created a lot of divisiveness. The good and the bad, the evil and the good. And that kind of message made it really difficult on the council to work as a group. One of the strongest arguments I had with her, which occurred both on the dais and then after we left, was with, was with her in the hall, in the, not the hallway, the alley that, that separates all the offices. Because a lot of her supporters came in and they were chanting and the council couldn't perform their work. So I, I stood up and I gave a speech to the folks who were chanting, saying that they were being undemocratic, they were tearing apart democracy, and that they basically were not getting their message across and they were being kind of revolutionary or whatever. And then eventually, the council couldn't continue. And so we, we left. And in the, in the hallway, she came up to me and said, why did you come out against the people? I said, no, the people were coming out against democracy. And that's the problem. And that's not something you should be doing. And a couple of the council members who heard the debate, later on, came up to me and said, I was really glad to see you arguing with her. People are sometimes afraid to confront the people who they think they work with, who they disagree with. And that's one of the major problems, I think, repeatedly in, in legislative bodies, maybe in clubs and stuff. Someone you like, you don't want to disagree with because you don't want to upset them. And that's not going to get a solution. That's not going to move forward. It's so important to take a stand that other people may not agree with. And I think that's what happened in the city council. Because Shama is still there, and you can't blame everything on Shama. But other people got elected to the council, had very strong opinions that I agreed with. But their approach was too much, too divisive, too much all right or all wrong. And not seeing, and I don't like the word moderate, but not being strategic, not figuring how to actually move something forward. And the greatest example is defund the police. Which, for some people, was a great slogan. Because they really felt, rightly so, that police were prejudiced and how they were enforcing the law and how basically you just get rid of police and the problem will go away. Other people felt like, yeah, police, there are definitely a culture amongst the police which does not call into line those that are basically not following the rules we're supposed to follow. But they do serve a basic purpose of security. And interestingly enough, the surveys that were done showed that the black, many of the people in the black community, who are not the younger activists, but the homeowners and the renters and the people who are more middle-aged and elderly, wanted policing. They just wanted good policing, not no policing. And they were very upset by no, you know, legislation to defund police, which never happened. They cut it back a little bit. And this is what happens so often with politicians or movements. They grab onto a great slogan. A great slogan in the sense it arouses people. It gets them organized, it gets them out, it gets their emotions high. But they are non-functional. They serve, they're like marketing. They serve to solicit people's energy, but it can't direct it in a functional, effective manner. And so, well, a lot of the council members talked about being sympathetic to defund the police. They never voted to defund police. They voted to reduce it. And some of, someone could argue logically, both for or against, whether it was a dramatic cut or not. But that's the debate that should have happened. And I think the last election, I heard from people who normally voted for the folks that lost, or didn't decide not to run again, was that, oh, they wanted to defund police. And I can't believe they took that vote. And I would say, yeah, but they, they didn't. Didn't matter. The cast had already been made, basically. People had already said, well, that was a bad vote they took before. Well, that was a bad, you know, belief. So people pay a price for grabbing on, well, it's happening now with the Israeli Hamas war, Hamas war. You have people who are protesting the Israeli bombing, and I would say, bombing that results in hospitals being hit and many residential areas being hit. Debate may be, should they not bomb at all? Or should they be better? Or where they're targeting, the whole question of how they go forward. But the number of people dying, it's 10,000 now, far out surpasses, and it's not a numbers game, but it's, it's unfortunately a metric you have to at least consider, far more than unfortunately were honestly slaughtered by Hamas, by their invasion. So do you compare number of innocents killed and say, okay, we reached the saturation point or not? Or when, you know, how do you resolve this? It's going to take people, I think, on both sides retreating from where they're, where they're at. But the only way they retreat is when you have leaders who are willing to talk, who are willing to consider alternatives. You don't have that on either side right now. But then, in the United States, you know, there are protests against Israel, there are protests against the Arabs. One of the things that I've seen in the media is that the people who are protesting Israel, Israel's bombing of Palestinians, and so that's pro-Palestinian demonstrations, is signs that say, we are Hamas, we support Hamas. Hamas, and again, I've, I've written about this in my newsletter, which I'll talk about a little later, knew pretty much what was going to happen. There are people who've been following us for a long time. Hamas did not want peace. They wanted to disrupt the connection that Israel was making with Samaritan communities. And, and I believe that they anticipated Israel overreacting, invading. Because the amount of infrastructure they put in, in the way of tunnels, underground tunnels, you don't use underground tunnels for diplomacy. You basically use them to survive through a war. But the protests is identifying with Hamas, you're never going, they are never going to win any kind of debate or support. Hamas is not the good guys in the sense of they're not being responsible to their own citizens, okay? And that's by overreaching. That's what I mean, is that you, you take a point that, yes, bombing should be stopped, civilians, Palestinians' civilians should be saved. You don't go that extra step. And I've seen that again, again and again, in many different examples. It's the bridge too far, it's pushing a message that people will not understand, misinterpret, or label the people who are promoting that message as being wrong. And so on the city council, it was very close votes, you know, two of the people who lost, lost by less than 500 votes, which is very narrow. In fact, many elections, it'd be considered, you could do a recount, not likely to change, recounts almost never change votes. But it was, so it wasn't, it wasn't a tidal wave. But it was enough people that probably didn't vote. It was a very low voter turnout. And that's what, now switching to a national scene, that's what the Democrats have to worry about on a national level. Because people often don't change their mind, okay? But, they change their mind in the sense that they, they flip entirely. But they can withdraw. They don't want to be involved. They're tired of watching the news. They're tired of seeing the conflict. They don't want to get involved. And not getting involved means also, I don't want to go out and vote. So that could happen on either side, whether it's liberals or conservatives. But I think it's happening, and it'll go back and forth. Right now, it's a year away from November. So if we're talking about Biden and Trump, and who knows? They may not be the candidates for one reason or another. But if they are, people will judge each of them, I, I believe, on how many of their, how many people they lose their support from, as opposed to how many people actually are voting against them. That may be more true of Trump a bit, just a bit. But people, if they lose your enthusiasm for someone, and that's what happened in the city council, they've lost their enthusiasm for people, they lose. And the voter turnout is generally, a lower voter turnout is a measurement of a loss of interest in an election. A loss of interest in the candidates that are running, losing faith in them. So I've talked a lot, and I want to, at this point, entertain questions and I could get involved in more details. Yes?
What are your thoughts about how to prevent Trump from being re-elected?
Okay, I like direct questions like that. I like to say, I'm going to give you two responses. I like to say what I'd like the reality to be, and then I'll say what I think reality will happen, okay? I would like the reality to be that the general public will recognize that Donald Trump has no idea of how a democratic republic works. And I, I don't say that as Donald Trump is evil. I think the results are evil, but I don't think he's actually evil so much. If you look at Donald Trump's history, If you look at Donald Trump's history, if you look at how he ran his business, it was a family operation. And everyone basically treated him as the boss. He got elected, which he didn't expect. He's still, the analogy, are criminal bosses, but in a sense, it is a family-type operation. He saw the government as a family operation, you know? And like Bill Barr was supposed to be loyal to him, all the cabinets, his advisors. When they were not doing what he wanted, he either fired them or iced them out. He felt that they weren't being loyal to him. He had no, he doesn't understand that democracies work by positions. When you're a president, you have responsibilities as well as power. When you leave a position, where you're no longer a city council member, no member of state legislator, no member of Congress representative, or a president, you are again another citizen, okay? He doesn't understand that. He also didn't understand that just because he was president and believed that everyone supported him, he couldn't believe that he lost Georgia. Because he knows Georgia, you know, Georgia, all in his mind, white nationalists. So therefore, why couldn't have won Georgia? My hope is that people will recognize that whether they don't like Biden's policies or whether they do like Trump's policies, there's another issue. And Biden touches on it a little bit, but it's more of an academic, is can our democracy survive another term of Trump? Because he's talking about, now I know the liberal mainstream talk about revenge, but it is. And you look at his game plan, and he's very well organized this time. He wasn't in '16. Now he has people who are supporting him. And the influence of money now, so I think we will face a very dangerous situation with him. And I would hope that that danger influences people on both sides of the spectrum to recognize that we need to keep the institution going. Even if it's, I mean, I'm one of these people who is, you know, I would never vote for Nikki Haley or the other Republican candidates, but honestly, we would need to have one of them elected, at least to keep the democracy alive. I, you know, and so that's what I'd like to see happen. Now, what I think will happen, well, the short answer is I'm not sure. Because I keep thinking to myself, there's a lot of former Trump supporters high up that are no longer supporting him. But his base, as we say, is so, is so big. And here's the, the statistics are phenomenal. Forty percent of all, I think it's voting citizens, believe that the last presidential election may have been not legit. They don't say it is, but may have been. So they're opening the door to saying, well, maybe Trump should be president, should have been president. I don't know, you know, this is the people in the middle, that sort of mentality. I don't know actually what happened. So now, having forty percent, it's a big base, but it's not a majority. This election's gonna be decided by a very thin group in the middle. You know, people keep saying that it'll come down to females, white females in the suburbs. But the latest polls show that Trump now has like a 1% lead of youth defined as 18 to 35 over Biden. A large part of that has to do, and that's a very recent poll, because that poll wasn't true four or five months ago, has to do with the Israel-Palestinian war. And part of it has to do with Ukraine too, strangely enough. There's a large percentage of youth, and I extend youth to 35, who do not like America being the world's policeman, you know? They do not like the idea of having a military budget that's bigger than the next three countries combined, and that's including Russia and China. And they fear that the US is too easy, too easily involved in these problems. I don't think it's a question that they don't like Israel or they like Palestine. I think it's a question of they don't want to get in a war. It's a very, and that may be Trump's strongest card, strangely enough. There are a lot of people who feel, I hate Trump, I don't like him, I don't like what his policies are. That's not entirely true, because some of them are definitely pro-gun and anti-immigrant or migration. But I think the biggest fear still is, I don't want to get involved. It's a question of fear. Even though there's an excellent article that just came out showing how, by The Economist, by the way, TV covered it, showing how actually Trump could probably get us more into war than Biden could, more to backing into it. So I don't know, but I do know, I do know, I do feel that there are certain slivers of the electorate that will probably determine the election. The youth vote, not by they're gonna flip for Trump, I think the majority will still go for Biden, if it's, or whatever the Democratic candidate is. But the question is how much? How many of them will sit on their hands? That's critical. And the other is how many of the folks who are independents, who are not committed to the left or the right, feel that maintaining democracy is critical? Yes?
I'd like to get back to the city council, which is our topic. You've been there a long enough time, and you did say that at least recently, new members to the council really don't know how it operates, or what, how the procedures that they should go through. Has that ignorance increased over the years that you have noticed? And if it has, then is there some way, some workshop at the beginning of a session to sit down and get these people concisely educated?
That is an excellent idea, and I've often thought myself about the same thing. It doesn't increase, it goes by waves. Every time there's a new group of people coming in, and there'll be like four new council members, you know, they're hard campaigning, so they're not necessarily reading a lot unless they've had some experience lobbying the council. Sarah Nelson understood, she was LA. Lisa Herbode, she was legislative assistant, she was in LA. So they understood how things work. Even Andrew Lewis was in LA at one time. So they were, you know, they may disagree with their policies, one way or another, but they did have a better understanding, I think, than the people coming on board. People, whether they're coming from business or whether they're coming from social services or whatever, there's a catch-up they have to do. And I will say, even people who've been there need to, a workshop or an educational, need to attend as well. There's things that you forget about, there's things you don't know about. You're right, I think the best thing that could happen, it should happen, actually it should probably happen in December, before they actually take office. And they should bring in former people, should be current people, and from both the executive offices and from, even someone from the judicial system, because they need to understand what laws they can enforce or can't enforce, and someone from the city attorney's office. And it should be an all-day, open-ended format. Yeah, I, I- Yes, a retreat would be an excellent idea. It'd be an excellent idea. And I keep twine with the idea to bring that up with some folks I know. And I, thanks for your prompting that idea again in my head. I think I am gonna try to move, nudge that along. Thank you. Uh, back, here's a line.
Considering that we are no longer teaching civics in high school, I mean, now we see the results. Shouldn't candidates also have this kind of a workshop, this kind of a presentation so that they wouldn't make outlandish promises, so that they would realize that promising the sky is not going to do it? I mean, this is honesty in advertising.
Right. Well, short answer is yes, that'd be great. Longer answers, would they attend? And if they attended, would they listen? But, you know, you need a, what would be seen as sort of a third-party neutral. You know, I don't think the chamber or the unions could put on something unless it was done jointly. Municipal league used to do something somewhat similar to that, but they haven't really been active for so long. League of M voters has a status of being, I think, seen, some people think of being too liberal, but I don't think that's an accurate, nor a very broad brush stroke acceptance. But you do need, church council again would be not quite a good fit. It's hard to, you know, and of course, each of the two parties doing it would have to be, you'd have to have something joint-sponsored by a couple of different organizations, probably. I don't think there's any one single organization get away with it. And bring in some academics that could, could do something. But those kinds of activities, quite honestly, you probably need paid staff or volunteers who are really dedicated. And you need at least one or two months of preparation. Probably too late even to do it for the people who've already in office, but already been elected to office. But for the candidates, candidates can jump in at the last moment too. You know, that's, you have candidates who jump in two months before the election and win. You know, that happened with Norm Rice when he ran for mayor. But it's worth a shot. It's definitely worth a shot. All right, I think I've, oh, let me end by saying that I've got some business cards out there which have my email address and my website, people want to take those. And I also have a sign-in sheet. Problem with the sign-in sheet, as I put it down, I recognize, is not much space for an email, but I do a website. It's just becomingacitizenactivist.org, if you remember that, it's the sentence, it's the title of my book. And if you go there, you can sign up for my newsletter or back to the sign-on sheet, put down your email and first and last name, that's all I need. I don't need anything else. And it comes out only twice a month. Tends to be a bit, they're not, they're not rants or raids, and they're generally not so much opinion pieces, so much as they're analytical pieces, talking about some history and talking about where we are today, talking about where, where things are developing. I deal, I deal with the Ukraine war, dealt with civic classes that someone mentioned, what happened to them, what's going on with those these days. I do talk about often, I do look at the court cases, how the Supreme Court is making decisions, so I look at things like that. And they are, the Post Alley picks them up. Don McLean and David Booster act as co-editors. And they often print them. In fact, someone that I talked to earlier said, the last one I just did, which just came out yesterday, I think they already posted on Post Alley. And there's a, when I send out the newsletter, it goes out to about 10,000 people. It goes out to, I'd say seventy percent of them are academics around the country, but then I've got about 600 journalists around the country, and then the others are just individuals. I mean, I know a thousand, fifteen hundred of them personally, but all kinds of folks who basically read it. But it's, it's something who, you know, you may want to not read each one, because I do go with different topics. My goal is to analyze what's going on and ask questions that haven't been asked before, if possible. Because I'll look at the media and try to take a slightly different angle. Some of the things in the past I did, was one of the first people, interestingly enough, to point out that Trump's last chance to keep in the presidency would be to have Pence overturn the vote count. That became a big issue, but I think I was the first one to actually put that in print, get it out. So I had been talking about that for a while. And usually the things that I pick up, I read a lot of academic papers and different wide spectrum of articles. So usually I read about a dozen to two dozen articles and try to pick out points that work together to point something out. So that's, that's my pitch for that. So if there's no more questions, the floor is yours. Thank you very much for having me.
I guess the message you've really given us is, once you're involved in wanting to understand government and do something about it, you don't leave. Because the opportunity is there. So thanks for sticking with it and sharing it. And thanks for coming. Bye.